The Gold Islands and the Lower Fraser River are the traditional territory of the Coast Salish peoples. For thousands of years, the Coast Salish people have lived in, travelled and fished the waterways of the Salish Sea. Alkamenaum language is the language of this land. Alkamenaum traditionally and to this day unites the Snanalis, Snanema and Staminus peoples as one family and on whose territories we stand today. We also give thanks to the ancestors, hereditary leaders, matriarchs and creatures, big and small, for looking after the rich resources and cultural traditions of this land. And I'd also like to just add, I'm super excited today for our meeting and have some wonderful guests in to present to us and looking forward to that presentation. So welcome. Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions or changes in order to the agenda? If none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda please? Mark and seconded by Liana, all those in favor? Motion is passed. Are there any corrections to minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are adopted. So item eight is section seventy-two, parenthesis three, report. Eight point one, section seventy-two, parenthesis three, report. There's a motion that the second section seventy-two, parenthesis, parenthesis three, report from the Torres Board of Education meeting on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and special project meeting on October eighth, two thousand twenty-five be received. Imagine you were that motion. Tim and seconded by Shantel, all those in favor? Motion is passed. Alright, so we have announcements and reminders. Strategic Directions Committee meeting will be online November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Our next Board of Education meeting is November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Remembrance Day, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. And we have a non-instructional day, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm now going to call on Jackie Bullock, Assistant Superintendent, to do interactions.
Thank you so much. Through the chair, I'd like to welcome Principal Lisa Bray from Sulara Elementary, who has herself and a few, it looks like fantastic students, come in to do a presentation on some of their work around the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which was honoured at the schools on September twenty-ninth, as schools will close on September thirtieth. So thank you so much, Lisa, for joining us with your students.
Thanks, well, CM, Siyaya, Iquana, Siuunala, and Felisa Bray. I'm Lisa Bray, I'm principal at Sulara Elementary, and it's a real honour to be here tonight to share with you what we did at Sulara to honour our recent National Truth and Reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy, the staff, when we were talking about our plans for this, for this day, it was really important to us to give our students an experience. And I think this quote from Dr Martin Book Lake speaks to the power of experience. Because what we wanted to do was to be able to speak to them. And that was sort of the premise of all the activities that we planned and our hopes for this day. So this extended and I hope it continues to go further. It was a little bit leading up to the day and then we have our students here, we have four, grade seven leadership students who are going to introduce themselves today to tell you about today's, we did some things leading up to it and of course the hope was that you would keep that experience in our heart as we move forward through the rest of the year.
Hi, Chika and Kautro. During the week before our National Truth and Reconciliation Day activities, classes read the book, Shishi Eko. It's a story of a girl who is going off to residential school and who created a bag of memories full of experiences and places that made up her culture. After reading the story, students made their own memory bags, noting the special items, traditions and people that make up who they are. We did this so that students could relate to the lost indigenous people experience through going to residential schools. Our day on September twenty-ninth started with a whole school circle gathering where we acknowledged the land that was taken from Snanema people and we honoured their care for the place we got to come and learn on every day. Our school has been learning and practising Patrick Alex's equality song that was gifted to us and the whole school sang this song together before carrying on with the station activities that we planned for the rest of the day. These activities gave us a taste of some parts of our local Coast Salish culture that would have been lost when children went off to residential school, like Shishi Eko. At each station, students heard about the activity, its significance and got an opportunity for a small experience. One of our stations was weaving. Each class took long strips of fabric and moved it into the chain link fence outside our school entrance. We learned that in Coast Salish culture, weaving holds stories and family connection. It teaches patience. Weaving together creates belonging and pride. Practicing and protecting this activity teaches cultural knowledge of love.
In our classes, we looked at a wheel to show when our Coast Salish peoples harvested, hunted or fished certain plants and animals. Learning about seasonal rounds helped show how the Coast Salish people lived in balance with nature and the respect they have for the nature, for land. We also ate dried blueberries and talked about how important it was for them to practise preserving neat-like food and plants for winter. Let's introduce myself.
Go ahead and do that now.
High school anthropophiona. At our school, we have a set of traditional drums that were put together by our Indigenous Inclusions teacher and a group of students last year. Some younger classes use the drums in their music. On Truth and Reconciliation Day, all classes had an opportunity to use the drums to play songs with our music teacher. She also talked about the significance of drums and their importance in Coast Salish celebrations, songs and stories. Our school did art with colouring sheets by Michelle Stony from the Itsin Territory. Other classes also used pieces of paper to create little symbols from traditional Coast Salish art, like old voids, half-circles, and put them on our whale-cut-out little art thing and we hung it up in our hall.
I'm squirrel anthropophenna. For this station, we played a game called Stuck Up on the Sticking. The how is a traditional coasting machine about hiding and guessing, but also about teamwork. The how also models fairness and respect. The how is a game that had been passed down from generation to generation. In this activity, we recognised indigenous culture and language. That's some of the words that we use as words, like quo, it means good day, neelio, it means welcome, naitip, it means good morning, ekwam, it means peace, and nankwam, it means you're welcome. Each class takes a part in games at this station, and the example of the game is the word "be" around the gym and the teacher would call them out and everybody would go to gather. At this station, we listened to a couple of Coast Salish stories. One story was about squirrel and it was told by George Senior Friends of May. What's the video from telling the story? The other story is a specific West Indigenous legend of the Douglas squirrel and its icons. The Coast Salish shared stories teach a lesson, lesson or connect to nature. I'm squirrel anthropophenna. Following truth and reconciliation day, we wrote patterns on parts of the nature. These ones above are similar, we can help truth and reconciliation. Some examples are using Alkamenaum, wearing white shirts and remembering facts. These are patterns, patterns coloured and displayed on the walls and the hall in a winding way. It's important to us that we practise reconciliation throughout the year. Thank you for listening, I said, well, thank you for listening and letting me share. Do you have any questions?
Below. Do you have any questions? Anybody? Anybody have any questions?
I am. Yeah, no, I just, through the chair, just want to share a little bit of appreciation. Being First Nations myself, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, I can feel a little bit of a tearjerker. Just knowing these types of things are happening in our district and as a First Nations person, knowing that, that we're, you know, not alone as First Nations people in the, you know, on the island, but also that the education of TRC, the Truth and Reconciliation, that's the cause to action, obviously is coming out, right? And that's what I see here. Where it's not a, it's never a First Nations thing, it's, it's, I always look at Truth and Reconciliation as being a non-First Nations thing. It's not, it's not about us as Indigenous, it's about everybody else. And educating themselves on what we've been to reconcile, kind of deal, right? So I just wanted to appreciate the students for sharing. That was heartfelt for me. And I'll be happy to share that with my First Nations people that I cross paths with all of them. But knowing that this type of thing is happening within our district, it's, it's really uplifting. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll get into them. I just, I'd just like to kind of be back off of what Tim just said. Also, as an Indigenous person, it really means a lot to me to see the teachings that you guys are getting in the schools and and also looking at the culture of the people here as well, not just, you know, the sad part of the stories, but the things that Coast Salish people did here and what they appreciated and respected. You mentioned the connection to the land. You talked about the drum, right? And it's really the heartbeat of the people. I know the superintendent was getting emotional there and I get emotional because I raise my hands to you and thank you so much, teachers and students for for being interested and really caring. It means a lot to us, you're an ally. And one of you said, you learn about these things so that, you know, we don't forget, right? That we have to understand our past to be able to reconcile. That makes a better future for all Canadians. So, thank you. I just wanted to ask any one of you. I did get this Fiona Santa Clara and I didn't, I didn't like. Trail? Okay. I want to ask any one of you, maybe you could tell me, what, what has stood out the most for you in your learning? What has meant the most for you in your learning?
I think probably just like learning about the art, different shapes, so, yeah.
People follow. Anyone else?
I think probably just learning about like the rebound that happened after all of the residential schools were closed and all that happened. I think learning about how we're trying to get, help them get their culture back and help like make sure it doesn't happen again.
That's really wonderful.
Yeah, probably learning about like their culture and things they did in their culture, so it doesn't get lost.
Same here, learning culture was the one. Thank you so much. I can tell that these teachings have gone to your heart. Does anyone have any time you wanted to?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to kind of share the other side of the coin. Clearly, I'm a settler on Snanema territory and I'm an invited guest. I, when I graduated from our schools, just thirty-some on years, not that long ago, I didn't know any words in Alkamenaum. I didn't even know the word Alkamenaum. I did not have any working knowledge for the local nations. And as I grew up, I started to feel like someone had denied me access to this kind of beautiful secret. And I'm so happy that you get to embrace it. And I have kids a little bit older than you. They already know far more than I do about local Indigenous culture. And I'm just so, I'm so marvel at how far you've taken us so quickly. You're in grade seven, you said? So you've been doing this kind of regularly since kindergarten? It's very impressive, very impressive. Thank you for coming to.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question. Well, first, I'd like to express thank you. I really love it when there's just one student coming, but it's a number of students, so you get to share the experience. So that's wonderful to hear different voices and different ways to present. There was a question about four or five slides down at the bottom. And does anyone remember the question? Because I'm going to ask it. Just pause off. So the question, so the question was, how does the drumming, how does the drumming make you, make us feel in that moment when we're connected, like to connect to the land where we are?
During the National Day activities, we were all doing it together and we were doing, I mean, the teacher was helping us. Yeah, did lots of two studies titled "Care Program", you know, "Worn them on", it was really fun to do them all together. Yes, using different policies about like how they were made, what materials and how they care for them. And so that felt good.
It definitely made me feel connected.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's come on comment and we think learning to culture that has been here for thousands of years helps ground us, right, in the history, but also we're looking for in the future, working together and creating a better place for everyone here. And you get to bring that forward throughout your life now. And it's to the, I said, to the teachers, to everybody at the school who have poured that knowledge into our students and for the students to receive that, I think is absolutely fantastic. And bringing together to, what you're learning is not just culture. There's science, there's math, there's music, there's, all of that has always been there. And now we're learning it through their culture. And I think that's absolutely fantastic that we're, that you've done that. You've woven them all in together and created that tapestry of knowledge for them. I really appreciate it. I think that's good to have you.
Any more questions or comments or anything? Just, I love the Dr Martin Book Lake intro. It's like, I teach actually Indigenous perspectives and for fifty-year student teachers who are training to be teachers, I always talk about, you know, the first people's principles of learning. I'm sure you've seen posters in your schools and one of the things we talk about is building relationships, right? So that means you have to open your heart up in order to learn and to give. So to give them to you, reciprocity. So thank you so much, students. Fiona, Santa Clara and Trail. We have a little gift for you here. And yeah, just come over. Well, maybe we can give them one. Support of parents and hearing. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Have a good Halloween. If you think of the candy, it's true. It's like getting extra more time for kids. I want to tell you, the woman with the green hair, she's from the Reconciliation Theatre and she's head of the Indigenous Students Club at BIU. And when she graduates, we should get our hands on her. We should hire her. She came as a friend of a parent and smudged for the kids before they came in and she'd be an ICW, sorry, I'm not going to get the name right. It's broad there.
Staff or Sulara's doctor was my student, yeah, one time years ago. Correspondence, moving on to item eleven, it's hard to move on after a presentation like that. We have correspondence eleven point one, D. Thomas, leading an Anamo work at secondary school. There's a motion that the Board of Education of Schools, Act sixty-eight, and Anamo Ladies Smith, refer to correspondence to D. Thomas to be received and filed. Do you have a move of that motion, Tim? Seconded by Liana. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Item twelve, Strategic Directions Committee Reports. There is a motion. Would either Tom or Martha like to read that motion?
I'm not on the long-range facility, so I think I, oh, this comes from Strategic Directions. Oh, you're so swag. Thank you. That the Board of Education of Schools, Act number sixty-eight, Anamo Ladies Smith, approved the Long Range Facilities Plan Advisory Committee's work plan for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year and that the revised terms of reference for the committee be approved.
Seconded by Greg. Tom, what do you think, Tom?
I just appreciate the work that's being done by the LFRP and work plan seems to have them busy for the forthcoming year. Wish them much.
All those in favor? Anyone else have any comments? So, okay. All those in favor of the motion? Motion's approved. Item thirteen, Senior Staff Reports. I'm going to turn this over to our Superintendent, Barbara.
Thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, I want to acknowledge the fantastic work that the staff did around Terry Fox Run. I think this is a formal acknowledgement of Assistant Superintendent Jackie Bullock for her leadership with regard to having all of our schools participate in the most wonderful event to really support the work around Caster research. And I do want to say that our district, at this point, we have, we don't have all of the funds that were raised from our schools may be itemised, but at this point, we know that at minimum, there has been twenty thousand dollars raised across the school. So I want to acknowledge Jackie. I also want to acknowledge our Director of Communications for all the work that she did with regard to promotion and the work around it. And then, of course, our manager, Karen Matthews, who also did a number of organisational feats with regard to that event. I also want to acknowledge our partners. There was a long list of partners who really supported the event. Anamo Ladies Smith and Anamo RCMP, Anamo Fire Department, Iggy Rilla Volunteer Fire Department, Tom Harris Community Foundation, Anamo Women's Schools Foundation, the City of Anamo, Front Runners Anamo Community, Addis Solutions Health and Sport, Advanced Health and Sports Clinic, Elite Image Graphic Design and Pit Shop, and Island DJ Company. So I want to make sure that that was, and we just really wanted to acknowledge staff who were entirely involved and even across Parry School, the amount of support that one said demonstrated was quite incredible. So we should be very proud of the work that the staff does in the name of the research. And hopefully, we're really appreciative of that. Second shout-out I'd like to speak about would be around, we have some training around our physical health and education teachers. It's with regard to their use of AED, AED, as well as Maloxone. And so all of our teachers across the secondary schools got together, led by our district vice-principal and our director of instruction secondary to do a lot of work with regard to that learning. Because we do know that we are the community supports and with regard to those, I think, life-saving initiatives that have been promoted by the Ministry of Education and Childcare. So we're doing our work around that. Third, another shout-out to our safety department. Last week, we had the great shakeout on October seventeenth. And the work that's from all there, just to keep all of our kids safe and the work with regard to safety. Very incredible. And just a great big thank you to Arlen Blatt, who is our manager of health and safety, along with the work that everyone does with regard to that. So again, I think this is a year from a small, little first break that we had. And so it's always good for us to keep our mind on that to ensure the safety of our staff and students and parents. And then lastly, we have the great fortune of having our student voice that was held yesterday and hosted by Barsby Community School. UXSD Leon Lee was there to be your ear to the voice of students. It's a bit of a new initiative this year. We have eighteen students from across every school that was in attendance. We had one school that wasn't able to do to the date come. But it was a great beginning of our event, our round Student Voice. We talked about our tagline, our long, growing thrive. They did some excellent work with regard to providing some feedback around our health, sorry, a wellness framework for students. And I think overall, we're going to be doing that monthly. And we have a great group of leaders there. And we also had five volunteers who would love to come to our board Strategic Directions meeting. And so we'll have to figure out how we choose the students who would like to come to participate in that role. So that's a bit of my update. Thank you.
Any questions, trustees? Mark?
Sorry, I apologize through you to our superintendent. Did I hear correctly that there were a number of students that wished to participate in our Strategic Directions Committee?
Yes, you did. Yes.
No shortage.
No shortage.
Wonderful. This is a twainers. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, sorry, Tom?
Yeah, I didn't want to have to do this, but I just, that Terry Fox thing was amazing. And I understand we did it twenty years ago. And I guess my question is kind of around my desire to not wait another twenty. Understanding that this undertaking is not likely to be an annual event, we asked a lot of staff to do this. But what is the possibility that we may be able to do this on a cycle that perhaps all elementary students could experience while they're in that eight-year cycle? Something along those lines. Thank you. Through you, Chair.
Yes, through the chair. I would like to comment that myself and Jackie Bullock had a conversation. No, probably not an annual event, but you know, the fifty year is only about five near years away. And so that might be something that we can really look toward.
Thank you very much. It's a great answer. Thank you.
Questions? We'll move on to item thirty-two. I'll turn this over to our Secretary, Terri, and our Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And so the, you know, first item I want to present this evening is a moment update. So normally, we do this Strategic Directions a few weeks ago, but because of the timing and the verification process of seventeen oh one, we'll be moving this forward to the board meeting because it's the kind of most likely that we're going to have the most accurate information. So the good news first is that we continue to be a growing school district. So we, many districts around the province are now in decline. But the bad news is we significantly missed our own targets. A couple of reasons for this. The main driver, we believe, is the changes to the federal student visa program as an example. So districts around the province are seeing just a complete shift in the demographic realities of what they're seeing on the ground. So it's a combination of both people choosing not being renewed and going home and people just not being allowed to come. And those are young, you know, you know, potential immigrants with children that are just not here because of that. And it just happened on a dime. So that's hugely significant. We were anticipating a smaller K cohort. But it's even smaller than we were anticipating. So that is a demographic shift. Being fill in the blanks on why that's happening. Is it affordability? Is it culture? Is this what, what, what is it? And this, I believe, is our first COVID cohort. So certainly, there is not a room. That is, that is clear. And the reality is, is growth in our community is not actually slowing down when it comes to construction. But people are having less kids. And the immigrant population was driving us a significant. The last one, of course, is Alberta is doing quite well. And that's always been a big impact driver for British Columbia enrollment. So we're up seven. So again, it's better than being the opposite. That is, that is certain. But really, we missed by about 200. Times that by 79, whatever that exact number is. So that's a significant impact on our budget. Now, a couple of things is I just want to, really want to give a shout out to the work that Margaret has done. Margaret Olson has done secondary principals, making sure that all of the FTE that they should be getting is in there and striving at the end to make sure that those, the kids that are going to take courses, we're all, we're all in there and that helped. And a shout out to Jackie Pulan and Tanya for being on the wall and Margaret as well with respect to making sure that we're not overstaffing. So there's certain places where we probably have. But just if we're down kids, it does mean that we have less divisions to go with it. So it's not just a straight, we're down $2 million as an example. So the amended annual budget will reflect these tools. So that's, that's one side of the coin. The other side is we are up in our designations more than we thought we were certainly. And of course, the board has put money aside, both in surplus, but as well as we front-end loan, continue to front-end loan support for, supports for inclusive learning. The reality, though, is, is that all of the new dollars that are driven by the new, the new designations are not automatically driving to support those students. Of course, except we front-end loaned it, we spend more than we get. But so it's when you see, oh, there's another, you know, whatever that number is, $1.5 million in diverse learning funding, that's not going to translate to a million and a half additional dollars. And so there's, there's a bit of that. What's not reflected here is if our international program is going to exceed their targets. Certainly, they're on track to meet. If they exceed, you'd see that in our amended annual budget. The good news, this is a secondary is a little bit overstuffed. Like they've got room in classes. It means that there is room to place additional international. So I mean, there's physical space and there's homestays. There may be space in classes. And then we won't have to actually provide additional staffing to do that. And so it'll just be revenue for the district to be able to mitigate some of this, this loss. So not good news, but we're confident that we're going to be able to be financially. You know, we're not, we're not going back to the drawing board and coming to the board to seek a whole bunch of cuts or any of any sort. But the long-term impact is going to be the concerning one. So is this a trend? Is, so what we were seeing before is even if we were expecting softening Ks, we were getting more people moving, maybe a little bit more mature families into the community and immigrants with, with older students or students of a variety of grades that were just kind of keeping our enrollment going or helping it grow even more. And so that, we're just hoping that that dynamic continues. We will be going back to the drawing board with these new demographic realities to look at. So happy to answer any, any questions. And it, this is not good news, but it's not, like I said, the sky is not falling with respect to the supports we're able to provide.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Through you to Secretary Treasurer. Yeah, I saw the news that we wanted and projected, but thank you for bringing it to us in full explanation. I guess I'm just wondering, can you unpack a little bit what our capacity is to mitigate these changes through reorganization? Like are we, like, once we hit September, kind of how, how set in stone are things? And are we, does staff have the capacity to make changes that take a 200 short call and make it less damaging to our operations and our efficiency?
Sure. So through you, Chair. Certainly not 200, but you know, Margaret's been working, Assistant Superintendent Olson working with our secondary principals to make sure if there's any flexible staffing, like second semester as an example, if the kids, if we're anticipating all these kids and then we, we put staffing out, there's, that doesn't need all of it in second semester. And in elementary, Assistant Superintendent Pulan could, you were, can I just confirm? You were changing up till the first week, I believe.
Pretty much, yes. We're adjusting and moving as much as we could. Yes.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, and I really want to credit the work of Ms. Sutton and, and Ms. Pulan and Ms. Olson, making sure that we're getting every single supportable CEF dollar that we possibly can get as well, which allows us to impact the, essentially get more money back into the operating fund. And so the CEF is a expense-driven pot of money. We need to be able to defend that if the ministry ever wants to audit us. They will tell us how that's supported with the, with the restored language and, and the LOU that drove it. And we've, we've really done, I think, a really great job making sure that we're, we're asking for every supportable dollar under that fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So my question, Chair, is about, how do we, how do I phrase this? So we, we have 77 more designated students. But there, how many of them were new students versus students that are already in our system and are now finally designated?
Mr. I, I don't actually know the answer to that. I'm not sure this Pulan has the sense.
It, it really is hard to sell it. I would have to go through it student by student to take a look. Sometimes it's new and others are the designations that have happened for the summer or information that has come in recently. So we would have to go through and analyze that.
So I'm just thinking about those students that are, like, have already been here for a while. They finally get their designation. And it's hard because as, as we said, that money goes into operating budget. And we have to fill, we have to pay for folks to work and do everything in here. And I, I'm wondering how much we're able to. And I know that we've used our surplus budget. These funds are there to support students, right? Those specific students technically. Start funding model, we're not going to get into that and all that kind of stuff. How are we ensuring that those students that now have those designations are receiving at least some of the supports that they're, they're needing because of their designation?
Through the Chair. Right now, I know that Assistant Superintendent Pulan, along with the Director of Instruction, Karen Steele, are working with each zone to get feedback from every single one of the principals and vice principals in regard to what their needs are. And we are looking at that surplus budget that was assigned and looking at how can we assign that to them as we go through that process. So presently, right now, that detailed work is happening. And so we do know that we put some EAs into this school to mitigate the September, October circumstances until we had further information around those details. And presently, that's the work that's going on.
Thank you very much.
And we have to add to that, too, is if the board recalls, the preliminary budget actually budgeted the highest number of EAs ever budgeted as well. So it was a bit more front-end loaded, not to suggest that the numbers don't require supports, but we were, rather than going minus in spring, we went plus in spring. And so there was just a bit more to be begin with. Again, not to under, to suggest that there's not challenges out there, but, but there was a bit more front-end. It was less, little less catch-up to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have one more thing through the Chair. If you recall, some of the surplus funding, I believe it was $670,000, was a part of money to support this kind of response. And I think that we are looking at that in terms of how do we actually distribute that through that process.
Thank you for that.
Any questions? Okay. I guess we'll have to close the panel.
Thank you. So the seed names memo is just outlining changes that are being proposed. I believe first reading is done now. Legislative changes to the School Act associated with the district's ability to provide childcare. So it's not law yet. There's a couple more readings to be done and debate, et cetera. But the, the main changes of the School Act, so this, this district has heard about childcare often. So these might not be a surprise to you. But prior to the proposed, when the changes come in, there's, there's a couple of limitations on what the district could do with respect to childcare. One is the days in which childcare could be provided and the times. So before and after school and then, and then school days. And so then you couldn't, I mean, they're school age kids, so it doesn't matter if it's before and after only. But pro D and spring break, summer and winter break are gaps that parents would expect to be able to be provided. Now, this summer, we tried summer programming, but in reality, it's more akin to childcare. And so the changes will allow for that to be permitted. We are already talking about what spring break could look like, winter break could look like, and even pro D's. But there's some things that we would have to work out, obviously, with respect to pro D. The second one is the age of the students. Now, this is one that we hope does not actually get engaged at this point. And that's, we are now, if it passes, going to be able to provide childcare fully. Zero to five, well, zero to whatever age childcare. We are going to caution again, but we know that our, our employees would love to be able to provide childcare. We just don't have the employees to do it. So when you think about the benefit of before and after school care, we've, for the most part, have bodies. EAs, secretaries, in some cases, library clerk, I believe, even, that want more hours, have skills with kids, and that's great. Bringing them up to 35, 40 hours, even, like full-time, you know, pay for a family kind of jobs. If we were to expand to zero to five, we don't have anyone. We would have to create an entirely new human resource department, entirely new department to run that particular program, let alone space, let alone those things. So we have the ability to do it. I would suggest to the board that at this point, that's not likely going to be something you're going to find staff coming to recommend that we take advantage of. So just, just as a heads up there, we haven't talked about whether, you know, the four-year-old or the brother or sister in, during the summer camp, whether that's age appropriate or something like that, but, but that's, that's the second one. The third one, again, we don't think is going to impact this. The School Act is, allows currently for districts to charge the direct income, direct costs of their party providers for rent, as an example, and, and to parents. And now they're going to change it to reasonable. We've always applied indirect to be reasonable. And you'd expect that we wouldn't be making a profit off of this group. They wouldn't be getting subsidy from our operating fund. So we don't foresee large changes in what we're charging, either as rent or as fees, as a result of the School Act. But again, what it does do, that does allow us to expand the times of service. That's going to be the most significant impact that we will feel almost immediately in the district upon the legislative change. So not sure if Assistant Superintendent Pulan, who's heading up much of this, wants to add?
I think you're sound enough. Thank you.
And just to remind the board, we think, we're almost certain, we are the largest provider of before and after school care of a, of a school district in the province. And we provide over, we are certainly the largest provider of childcare spaces in the region. We provide over 1,600.
Fantastic work, Steve.
So happy to answer any questions? When, when it becomes, we, we do regular childcare updates, of course, and we'll probably have one in January, I would suspect, if we're anticipating recommending changes, expansions, it's per the policy. And at that time, we'll talk about whether we're doing spring break, et cetera.
So questions? We have Tanya.
Thank you, Chair. And Mr. Walsh, just to confirm, with the zero to five, the reason for that is because there are different qualifications required for care providers, correct?
Yes, through, through each other, there is, but that's not the main reason.
Oh, okay.
Because even if we had an abundant, like, like right now, every single person we'd hire for zero to five would need to be qualified, but we'd also just need to find people. So there are, every single body would be new. That's the distinct, that's the difference. Whereas we're not extending any EAs' hours in that case. It's just a full-day job. So, so there, there is the, there is the qualification issue, but there are also just, is the basic human resource issue.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Any other questions? It's saying, no more students. I guess we back on again, right?
So, so we just heard about some changes from the ministry with respect to childcare that were responsive to, I think, the general community's desire to, to get over a need. Here's an individual kudos, frankly, to the ministry. So we had a bus go down, unfortunately. No, no injuries or anything like that. There wasn't an accident. The engine just quit running, so it was irreparable. And so we told the ministry and we had a bus on our capital plan. In fact, we had two. And it appears as though there's both some, some available as well as funding left in that plot. And so what we talked to the ministry about is just moving forward that request to this year, and they're going to be able to support that. So we should have, there's two buses, in, in fact. Now, the, the less positive news, though, is that they would be diesel. We don't, there's a few reasons. One, we don't have the infrastructure yet. We are expanding our infrastructure. Two, though, there is actually not available electric buses and there's continuing to unfortunately be significant issues with them that are impacting our ability to provide, you know, daytime outings, for instance. And so having these two diesels, hopefully, we're looking at the last of them. But the reality is, is that in order to address this issue initially, we didn't need at least one to have to be diesel because it's available, because we made it fast. And again, the second one is the contemplation of just, frankly, the ability to, to balance our, our need and our long-term goal with, with the immediacy of being able to provide the services. So what we need is, we do need a motion to amend the annual capital program. And the motion is there. And it doesn't, the file doesn't need to be read, just the motion to.
Can you start, can you say?
We do need the motion.
Do you want to?
Sure, yeah. That the Board of Education approved the amendment to Capitol Biola number two, 2025 slash 25 dash CPS D68 dash 01. To read Capitol Biola, number Capitol Biola number 2005, 2006, CPS D68 dash 02, reflecting the Ministry of Education and the childcare's amendment to the annual programs funding.
Hold second or so, yeah, right? Yeah. Any comments, Tom?
I have a question through you, Chair, to Secretary Treasurer. I've recently heard across the dinner table from a child athlete and from a former colleague that our buses are becoming very, much more difficult.
and from a former colleague that our buses are becoming very uh much more difficult to book for outings this year, and you kind of alluded to that. Um, I've also heard a reference the idea that their costs are escalating. Is is this going to alleviate some of that pressure? Is this designed to help with that situation?
Future, I I have not heard the cost escalation.
I think it's, sorry, just from what I understand, it's when the district buses aren't available, then they call it a private option, which increases costs.
Future, extremely uh more expensive, certainly. Um, so and perhaps I could look to uh Ms. Pulan to help me as well. But uh, what what my understanding is, is this summer, uh, we the the alarm was sounded as the of the impact of schools being able to do field trips in an affordable basis. And one of the things that we did was we actually went out and acquired three three, yeah, three additional used buses from other school districts that we're going to be disposing of. Their lifetime, this is not going to be a long lifetime, but certainly uh enough years to make that very, very small purchase worth our while for districts that were disposing of them. And so those three are going to help that particular issue. So I thought it was partially alleviated. Um. It's probably.
I understood it was mainly alleviated and have not heard back, so I can follow up, but I have not heard of any other concerns since then.
Yeah, that's true. The other thing we did try to do is we tried to acquire a couple of smaller buses that might allow coaches that with the proper licensing to be able to use those and bring their bring their students that we have not been able to acquire. The larger buses, though, we have been successful. So I I'm somewhat surprised to hear that. I mean, hopefully, that's just demand because there's so many people volunteering to you know, give kids great experiences, but.
My information's probably at the bottom of my bowl.
Much, it should have been alleviated because of those three, because I think we came to the board last year expressed like that's one of the drawbacks to the e-buses is that you've got to charge them in the day, which takes them essentially out of the fleet for the purposes, and that's what they replace the temp replacement ones we're supposed to alleviate. So probably not completely small, but certainly better than we were thinking it was. But yes, it should help them.
Seeing more other questions, um, follow motion. All those in favor? Motion always passed. And Tanya, I just assumed you would put it in the chat if he went through favor, so. Um. Moving on to uh, moving on to unfinished business, fourteen point one. Surprise, surprise. It's Mark Golds again.
So uh, thank you, Chair. This is really a reflection of uh the work that Gillian and their team did to get consultation following putting revised policy two oh eight out to the community. And as as you'll recall, there's two issues here. First, we went out for consultation on the idea of making strategic directions permanent. Uh, and again, just very little feedback. Uh, and then we went again with the idea of one, changing membership to recognize the I change in structure to I U C, the leaders of the R B to to put and replace the name essentially to be around the strategic directions table. And then the second one was the idea of um having students uh take a similar role to our partners, the Q B and the N D T A, uh, I U C around the table, the voice uh with no vote. Uh, and so we again did not get um feedback during that uh that that period. And so we are recommending that the revised policy be adopted. And so you'll see, um, really, you see the language that came from the last board meeting is that uh that includes Indigenous Education Council representation, student representation on Strategic Directions Committee for final approval, and then a selection of students and a member of Indigenous Education Council be invited. And the uh policy is reflects that language, the terms age thirty-three of the agenda. Section one, one point three states that N D T A, Q B, local six oh six, and so District Parent Advisory Committee, Indigenous Education Council shall be invited to name one representative and the student voice circle will be invited to name a selection of students to open meetings at the Strategic Directions Committee, et cetera, et cetera. So. I recommend a motion, is there?
Mark?
If there are no questions, I would like to move the motion.
Do you have to read it?
Sure.
Oh, I need a second. Do you want to? Thank you, Chad, now.
The Board of Education of School District Number Sixty-Eight, and I am Lady Smith, Adult Revised Policy Two Zero Eight. Board Committee Representation and Annual Work Plan. Um, well, I can't really say much more than what I said at the Strategic Directions Committee at the last meeting. I emphasized it as a meaningful, you know, student voice, which reinforces the idea that education is for students, not just about them. Um, empowers the students to become active citizens and future leaders through real-world democratic participation, and it provides students with authentic learning experiences and governance policy. And students experience the direct impact of the Strategic Directions Committee and how it affects them at the school level. So um, without going any further, I'll hope the motion passes and I'll be happier than than anything.
Any thoughts? Questions? A note of all the motion, all those favor? Motion has passed. I business, I don't see any new business. The item sixteen is for information, because the board motions report. There's also trustee committee reports on page thirty-six. Uh, question period, Chair, any questions? We have no questions. Um, is there any further business? Since there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned.
Second.